All right, it's 5 o'clock at this time. I'd like to call this meeting of the Belton Independent School Board District of School District Board of Trustees in order, a forum for board members as president. This meeting has been duly called and a notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Governor's Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you all for joining us this afternoon. I keep wanting to say morning, it's been a long day. We would like to go ahead and get started with our board workshop and the first thing on our agenda is the 2017 Bond Project Update and I believe Jared is going to bring us up to speak. Good afternoon, how are you?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Hot, tired, but I'm glad you're here.
It feels like summer is here already.
Summer is here.
Well, thank you again for having us here to be able to give the update on the bond construction projects from here. It's an exciting time as we step through the projects and start to see things not only come out of the ground and take shape, but then also start finishing up from there. So the first one, of course, is Charter Oak Elementary School. So as you recall last time, these are the images that we were seeing in terms of just getting to the cusp of finishing in terms of construction, putting them in those finishing details and ultimately looking to wrap up construction. So then as we look this month, we're really seeing those final details come into place. So overall, what you see here is the image of the front door on the top, the parking being put in place and then the brown areas, of course, will start receiving landscape and all the little final details. So we're seeing all those things really come together in terms of the exterior design and exterior finish. As you look in the bottom right image, you can really see the overall site and you can see everything there from the parking, the building and then the playgrounds as well that are really starting to take shape. See, you can see it just here on the third image, you see there's the playgrounds here that are really, we worked hard and talked with the district about nestling the playgrounds within the wooded play area and really creating that buffer between the landscape. And so what you're actually seeing in that image, you see the trees there, but then also that surface is a fall protection surface. So all the parents will be happy, it's not pea gravel, it's not bark mulch, the teachers won't have to sweep it out of their classrooms, it's actually a port in place system there that's nice. But as we go through, really the inside is starting to take shape. Go back to, one more. There you go. So everything from the top left image, which is the library cubbies or the cubbies out in the hallway, there'll be areas for art display, all the way into the classrooms and sealed concrete that they're starting to actually uncover that from the construction crew and get the final clean on. And then here in five days, we'll be looking to check everything off with a punch list and make sure that the contractor is substantially complete. So we'll develop a punch list, engage the Belton ISD team and then look to achieve final completion in 35 days from there. So we'll get all those details in.
I just want to go back to the playgrounds here and just say that is our model that we have in our capital projects list. We've talked about upgrades to all of our playgrounds. Jared reminded me that the surface is what we have built into those desired projects for the future and I'm very pleased with them. That playground is fantastic at Charter Oak Elementary, so very appreciative of the design.
Also, having been out there, I was reminded there's a hilly area and I wondered about that hill, I had a lot of questions about that hill. I was reminded that children on purpose actually like to tumble down hills. I forgot about that, you know, when you're as old as I am, you forget that people fall on purpose. Kind of a cool area.
Definitely is. We've also heard from teachers that it's a good motor skills activity as well for training for students who need that.
And it's not very tall.
It's not very tall.
It's like three feet.
Well, you're all pretty long as kids, they are.
It's a mountain for kids and for some others. So we're excited about Charter Oak Elementary School, really nearing completion and Clive's been doing a great job of staying on top and they've stuck with the day and really gaining the end goal on that one. So then the other exciting one, Lake Belton High School. So this one has been seeing a lot of activity as of late. So what I'll point out, these are the previous photos that we showed, but if you look right here in the center, you'll notice that you'll see a lot of concrete slab, which is this area here. And so basically they have filled that in. They're still working on a few last little details of the structural steel with the second floor in place, but it really is amazing how much work is going on and what the different stages are between the two. So on the, the contractor has elected to start on both ends of the building here. So you'll notice that the steps in construction kind of lead from bare concrete and steel with the second floor structural steel. They're starting to put framing in place. This is the sheeting, the purple is the sheeting and then the blue is the air moisture membrane. So they literally have all these different phases of construction all the way into, you'll see down here in the bottom right, the brick that's going on. So there is a lot of variation in the work that's going on here in place. As we step inside the building and really look inside those spaces, they're putting in a lot of the MEP rough in, so we're starting to see the number of workers increase on site. So just to kind of give you a comparison, in the first six months, they did roughly about $20 million worth of work. In the last three months, they've done another $20 million worth of work. So they have really picked up the pace with the number of workers from about probably 50 on site to over 200 on site now and we'll probably see that pace continue pretty strong like that for the next six to eight months as a transition to get drywall installed, all the MEP rough and everything else happening within the building. Light bites on this one, Bart LaCocke is doing a great job as construction manager at RISK, staying on top of rain and making sure that they're still targeting the July 31st date in 2020. So we're about 15 months out from substantial completion on this one as well. So very exciting on that.
You said 40%?
41.6 as of March. We're tracking that and looking through the pay apps and making sure, you know, everything's on the up and up for this one. So very exciting on this one. Any questions on those two?
I heard some interesting middle school feedback.
Uh-oh.
Yeah. Why did they decide to make the high school blue and purple? So we corrected that, so.
That's good. Every time I drive by, I think, oh, I can't wait to see what's next. It's coming.
It will be coming here soon. So then the last project I wanted to touch base on, and this is really the slide that we have to show right now because it truly is a blank slate, is the Belton High School Orchestra Project. So the board authorized the district to move forward with the design at the end of 2018. So we had the opportunity to meet with the district starting here in 2019, which included principals, staff, we've gone through tours, we followed up with staff interviews and really starting into the programming and schematic design effort to really understand what are, not only the needs for the orchestra program, but what are the design implications because it is going in front of Belton High School. And so Jill has offered to take that on as a construction project and live with it for the next school year. So we're working through those minutia and trying to find that optimal solution moving forward. Right now, we have another meeting set for this Friday that we're meeting with the district to try and finalize parts and pieces and arrangement. And so then we would look to come back to the board in April, so a month from today, to be able to present schematic design and get any input and approval to continue moving forward on that one. Tentatively, we're looking at about five to six months for design and then having it open for the 2020-2021 school year, so a year from now, we'll be talking about substantial completion of that.
So I was by there the other day and I saw the stakes out front, the flags and everything. Is that kind of already getting an idea of the scope of how far it's going to go out towards the street?
I haven't seen the stakes, but I would be willing to bet that's for geotechnical engineering, so they've been engaged as well as surveying has been engaged as well. So we're getting the lay of the land and everything else. We are talking about adjusting the front road, but not impacting the drop off queue and parking and everything else. So we're trying to find that right balance between being in the front and making it work and not impacting it too much.
So as you know, this is an important project for us because we lose the band hall at the ninth grade center, which will become a middle school again and that's where our orchestra has been meeting every day. So they are displaced without this project, so this will be an important addition for Belton High School.
So any final questions on that?
No? No. No, we'll be silver, thank you.
Great, absolutely, thank you for that opportunity.
Progress is always exciting. All right, so our next item is going to be our spring demographic update, Michelle Box. Thank you, Michelle, it's always good to meet you.
Thank you. I was thinking I was missing you guys. I've spent so much time here in the fall, it feels like it's been a minute since I've been back, so thank you very much today. We do have your spring demographic update. This does include all your new fancy boundaries and new enrollment projections for those boundaries. First, we're going to do the same old boring economic news to start with though. The Temple Clean MSAs added about 2,400 jobs in the last 12 months through the end of January. That matches the national job growth rate of about 1.4%. So you're cruising right along with the national rate there. You can see the unemployment rate has ticked up a little bit, but that 4.1% in the city of Temple is still well within full employment for the region. So that ticked up in the unemployment rate is really due to people entering the workforce. This is a positive sign. So we're seeing more competition for labor and more people entering the workforce as a result of that low unemployment rate. About 6,600 homes sold through 2018 within the MSA. That's up about 280 over 2017, so we still are seeing increased housing activity. So looking at how that breaks down by city, this is the city of Belton's housing market, just a couple of quick stats for you. The year-to-date sales through the end of 2018 were up over 2017, almost 10%, so still really strong home sales increasing in activity in the city of Belton. Those average price and median price there at about 230 in the average price and 220 in the median price, still up double digits over where they were in 2017. Still really strong price appreciation and really strong demand because of those increased sales. Number of listings is still going up. Again, that's due to people seeing that profitability of trying to be able to sell their home. But the existing home inventory is still down, down at 2.9 month supply. We want to see that more at a five or six month supply, so that shows just how undersupplied this market still is because of how desirable and hot that housing market has been. In the city of Temple, we are seeing a little bit of a slowdown in their year-to-date sales. See, it actually did dip negative from 2017 to 2018. That average price has flattened a little bit, definitely not the same double-digit price changes you're seeing in the city of Belton. However, still good price increases in Temple as well. Number of listings has actually dropped a little bit, again, due to that drop in sales and inventory is still flat. Again, that inventory is still too low at about three months supply. So both cities are still fairly undersupplied for where we want to see them. So diving into your school district specifically, just looking at the total district home sales by transaction type since 2010. So back in 2010, you had about 1,200 home sales and about 19 or 20% of that are what we call distressed property sales, so REO and foreclosure sales. Today, that number sits below 5%, so again, much, much healthier housing market within the district and more than 2,000 total home sales within the district, including about 1,400 or 1,300 existing home sales. Your existing home sales have almost doubled in the last eight years and your new home sales have more than doubled just since 2010. So again, we have talked about this, this price increases and this is something that we still keep an eye on. So we have looked again at your average new and existing home sale price within the district. Back in 2010, your average new home sale price was about $180,000. Compare that to the end of 2018, where it was sitting just under $250,000. We are seeing a little bit more of a gap between that new and existing home sale price, mostly due to the labor constraints and the price points of those new homes coming online. The average existing home has gone from about 175 to about 213 in 2018. That's an increase of about 20% in the last eight years. So we are still seeing really strong price increases across the district. This is a new slide we've got for you. We actually geocoded those existing home sales within your district to really try to hone in on where those homes were being sold within your district specifically. So we geocoded them to their address, just like we do your students. And what we can see is some of the density by these neighborhoods of existing home sales where we're seeing some turnover, especially in certain elementary zones. These are your new boundaries, but what we found was that the Lakewood Elementary Zone actually had the most existing home sales in 2018, followed closely by the High Point Elementary Zone. So those correlate with those neighborhoods, seeing a high secondary cohort. So that's what happens when those existing homes start turning over. You're seeing little schoolers and even more high schoolers, people moving into the district with a little bit older kids into those neighborhoods. We also did see Purtle and Sparta had about 160 existing home sales, so followed closely there. But you can see a little bit of that concentration starting in the northern part of the district here with those existing home sales. Looking at your new housing market, those green polygons are going to be your active, actively building subdivisions. The yellows are going to be those future subdivisions, but we expect home building to begin in the next roughly two to five years, depending on their platting status. Right now, you guys have about 2,000 lots available to build on and more than 6,000 future lots that are still planted in the pipeline and that is across the district. And we expect you to be building about 750 to 800 homes for the foreseeable future. So through 2019, we do expect that 675 that you're doing right now to tick up again. Still more homes coming. So I am going to show you a couple housing slides, just on some things that we've seen that have changed since I was here in the fall. So the North Gate subdivision has delivered its third phase, so it's starting in these northern section here. So they have about 200 lots ready to build on in that subdivision. We expect them to continue to build about 40 to 50 homes a year. They've got a really good price point at about 175 to 275, so definitely that entry level product where you're going to see new kids coming into that Tarver Elementary Zone. Mesa Ridge on that 317, those of you who've been with us for a while, this is a piece of property that we've been tracking for a while. It does have a little bit of renewed interest. They do have a preliminary plot that's under review in the city of Temple right now. Just a little bit to the south there, still in the Tarver Zone is Lake Point. They've still got about 200 lots remaining to go. They've been building about 150 to 175 homes a year. So we expect Lake Point to be built out of their lots in the next year and a half. Basically by the end of 2020, they're going to be done. So what they did was they grabbed a piece of land in the south. Lake Point Terrace is, they're wording it as their Phase Two of Lake Point. They're going to have an additional 600 lots in Lake Point Terrace. They have started ground clearing just this month, so if you're seeing some activity on that property, that's what that is. And they're hoping to have their first homes starting by about early 2020. So right as Lake Point builds out of lots, they're going to be starting in Lake Point Terrace, just to the south. Now in the new Charter Oak Elementary Zone, just across from your beautiful school site there, the Reserve at P Ridge, 350 total lots and they do have their first phase delivered and they've got their first homes and their models are under construction right now. So we do expect the first residents to start moving in kind of late summer, depending on that weather. Hopefully it doesn't stay too wet for them. They do have an additional 24 duplex units that are planned and they're plating their second phase down in this section right here right now. So those price points are going to be about 150 to about 175 starting, so we do expect a good elementary yield, especially due to the proximity of the school right there. So this is going to be really desirable for those young families moving in. The Plains at Riverside, 246 total lots, still 42 left to go remaining. They've got about 120 homes occupied, building about 35, 45 homes a year from that 200 to about 250 price range. Down in the Belton side, in the Sparta Elementary Zone is Circle C Estates, 80 total lots. They have groundwork that's just finishing up, they should be paving streets right now and they have their pre-lot sales underway right now. So we'd expect their first homes to be starting in the next 30 to 60 days. They're hoping by May to start seeing foundations being poured in there and their first residents will be kind of later this year. So basically for the fall, late fall, you will start seeing some students in into Sparta out of Circle C Estates. That is a higher price point there, at about 365, so it's probably going to be a little bit lower elementary yielding, probably north and middle, middle and high school kids there. And Cinderella Estates, 177 total lots, a couple homes under construction in there and they're getting their first residence right now. So we're going to start seeing students coming in to right next to Trail Elementary. And finally, the Three Creeks, always got to include Three Creeks, 1,500 total lots. They've still got about 900 lots left to go. They do have streets paving in Phase Five, you've been out that roundabout, big section of lots right in there that should be delivering by about April. So they're going to be starting homes in that new section soon. And they've been building about 125 to 150 homes a year and they expect to continue that pace in 2019. And finally Hubbard Branch, 500 future lots, another one that we've been talking about for a while. They have started groundwork on their first phase, 177 lots, and they expect to be delivering their first little section of that of about 90 lots by the end of 2019. So we'll see first homes and first residents early next year out of Hubbard Branch. So that leads us to your new updated 10-year forecast. We expect you to grow similarly next year that you did this year, adding about 370 students for this fall for a 2019 enrollment of about 12,260. In the next five years, we expect you to add about 2,000 students for a 2023 enrollment of just shy of 14,000 students. And the next 10 years, you can add upwards of 4,000 students for just under 16,000 students by 2028. Now, it still sounds scary, but you guys have done a lot of great work to make this manageable. Just as a point of reference, when we were here in the fall, we had four campuses that were going to be over capacity by 2020 and five campuses that would be over capacity in 2021. And today, those yellow boxes are sitting much further back. So the opening of Charter Oak is definitely going to relieve those elementary campuses and you can see some of these yellow boxes are, we do have this within 5%, so some of these aren't even over capacity, just kind of nearing capacity like Southwest Elementary. We do have Charter Oak Elementary opening this fall with about 380 students. That does include a bilingual program at that campus. We have adjusted per Dr. Contaminant's notes on the bilingual program that will be moving from Sparta to Charter Oak, so that is reflected in these numbers. Overall, you could enroll about 6,000 elementary students by about 2020. Looking at those, the middle school and high school, again with the new boundaries, Belton Middle School is expected to open in 2020 with about 700 students and Lake Belton High School will open just under 900 students in '20 and that is with just ninth and 10th grades and then adding that 11th and 12th grade. So again, full, expect you to enroll about 12,200 students this fall.
I think what's important to me when I look at that chart is the total capacity at 3887 and then looking across the years and seeing when you're starting to approach that 3887 as soon as you're completely full. And so you see that 25 to 27 range where you're hitting 35 to 3700 students at the middle school level. So there's some implications there for, for the future for another middle school in the district that's coming.
And we did see while conducting the boundary plans this fall that those, the two northern middle schools are expected to go over capacity first, just due to their size at this time.
Yeah, I have one more thing there too. Some other implications of that are when we make transfer decisions in the fall, we come back and talk about middle school for 2020 and how we might approve or disapprove transfer requests. We may want to do what we've done in the last several years to consider accepting only out-of-district transfers at only certain schools. And so we'll have that conversation in the fall. Wanted to point that out as you looked at those numbers.
Great. This is just a couple summary bullets. Again, your job growth rate is matching the national rate at this point. The total district home sales continued to rise through 2018. We are expecting you to build about 750 to 800 homes through 2019. Groundwork has started on Lake Point Terrace and Hubbard Branch, so we'll expect to see homes starting in about a year. And we'll open Charter Oak Elementary this fall with about 380 students, including that bilingual program. May I answer any questions? A lot of that probably looked familiar.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
At this time, the board will go into closed session. Texas Government Code SubChapters D and E, we're going to consultation with attorney, Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, deliberations about real property, Texas Government Code Section 551.072, and personnel of Texas Government Code Section 551.074. We will be back as soon as we can. At 6:03, we will reconvene and open session. At 6:03, we will reconvene and open session. At this time, we'll get started with some negotiations.
Yes, they have quite a large group out there, excited. Great achievement. We're starting with the History Fair State Qualifiers. The 2019 Heart of Texas Regional History Fair was held in February at Baylor University. In total, 18 students and 10 projects placed first or second in their respective categories, all fine to participate in the Texas History Day in late April. That's the state level. In the junior group documentaries category, North Belton Middle School students Kalise Kane, Hannah Wood, Madison Floor and Rebecca McGuire placed first for Before Little Rock: Tragedy in a Small Texas Town. And I would also like to mention, two of their members are running track right now in academies, but they were honored by the Southern Christian Leadership Conference with their Stone of Hope Award in history in Fort Worth earlier this month. Congratulations. And Madison and Hannah, just go ahead and scoot to the side. Yep.
Keep going right down there.
Yep. Okay. From South Belton Middle School, we have Gianni Zeca and Ashram Gamande achieve a second-place finish with their documentary on the Peloponnesian War. Advancing to state, advancing to state in the junior individual exhibits category is Matthew Farwell from South Belton Middle School. His Union Pacific Railroad Construction and Destruction of the West exhibit earned a first-place finish. Next up, from South Belton Middle School, Emily Lanham advances to state in the junior papers category with recovery through the wreckage, the Oklahoma City bombing. And with a first-place finish in junior individual website, McKenna Morrow from South Belton Middle School will be competing at state with her website, Finding Family After Slavery. And McKenna also presented on this at Central Texas College in February. Congratulations, McKenna. I'm going to go absolutely quick to take a picture of our junior history fair participants. I'll come back real quick.
Ready? One, two, three, four.
Congratulations.
Hold on, hold on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Based on the state school level, we have from Belton New Tech High School at Wasco, Emily Olson, Gracie Creek, Jayla Ward, Sylvia Sunshun Crabbe and Thea Lancaster's senior group performance called Josephine Baker Jazz Cleopatra finished first to advance to state. Congratulations, ladies.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
One, two, three.
And if you'll ladies will just move to the left, we'll take a senior picture again. Also advancing to state in the senior individual exhibits category is Caroline Mullenrock from New Tech. Her Sanctified the Untold Triumph Over Misogyny earned a first-place finish, as did...
Thank you.
Congratulations, Caroline. As did the senior group exhibit, Verboten.
Yeah, thank you. And if you'll ladies will just move to the left, we'll take a senior picture again. Also advancing to state in the senior individual exhibits category is Caroline Mullenrock from New Tech. Her Sanctified the Untold Triumph Over Misogyny earned a first place finish, as did... Congratulations, Caroline. As did the senior group exhibit, Verboteen, Concentrating on Love, created by Marcus and Vanessa Ait from Felton High School. In senior individual website, New Tech student Aditi Bots, The Partition of India, Triumph of Independence, Tragedy of Division, placed first at regional to advance. And then finally, Kritika and Mashwari Rajesh advanced to state in the senior group website category with Alan Turing, the father of computer science. Obviously, a lot of work goes into these projects and our campus coordinators or teachers supporting these state qualifiers from North Felton Middle School. I know we have with us Ms. Elizabeth Howson. Ms. Howson? Danielle Connor from South Felton Middle School. Here comes our New Tech, our New Tech teachers, Tim Hutz, Tim Hutz, Matthew Vistrelly, and Allison Bradburn. Ms. Rodriguez? If anybody wants to stay right there, we'll...
Y'all ready? One, two, three, smiling.
Congratulations, congratulations. Let this clear out just a little bit. I promised some of the parents that are waiting with the back groups that we'll give them time to see if they can come in and get some seats. Okay, the next group is our base contest state qualifiers. Felton High School art student Kaylee Combes is advancing to state in visual arts scholastic event base contest in April. Kaylee is a double medalist, advancing with two paper cut pieces. They were beautiful. Our other advancing student, Haley Capion, was not able to make it. She advanced with a ceramic base. Ms. Emily Simroth is Kaylee and Haley's art instructor at Felton High School. Kaylee was with us the same time last year. She had a project advanced last year as well. We'll send the good one on, we promise. Yeah, we'll see. Congratulations, Kaylee. Now, Dr. Montgomery. Sorry. Okay. U I, our first group of U I L solo and ensemble state qualifiers are from our orchestra. In February, in the regional competition, VHS Orchestra achieved a record number of students achieving Superior One rankings from the judges, taking home 28 solo and four ensemble medals. Of those, 11 soloists were certified to go to state contest June 3rd, along with a quartet ensemble. Advancing to state in violin will be Jackson Beladortic, Helen Brew, Elizabeth DeBolt, Megan Dunagan, Gwyneth Sockenmeyer, and Kara Shin. And y'all just stay, yeah, just stay. For viola, we have Emily Hawkins and Julie Johnson will be competing along with Sidney Fox on cello. On piano, two students who also qualified on violin and are already in here with us will be competing, Kara Shin and Elizabeth DeBolt. We don't have an additional certificate yet, we just... Both are also members, I want to flag, both of those ladies are also members of the state qualifying quartet. So now step forward with your additional quartet members, Emily Hawkins and Miranda Hickman. Under, and now one more big group picture while y'all get set up. Mr. Fairley, please join us. Under the direction of John Fairley, both Felton High School orchestras also won sweepstakes earlier this month at a U I L concert and sight reading competition. This is the top honor an orchestra can receive from U I L. We are so proud of our orchestra. Congratulations. Congratulations. Now bear with me, Mr. Flores. We have some that are not with us today.
Oh, it's all right.
We're still going to recognize their names. Our next group of U I L's state solo and ensemble state qualifiers are 35 members from the Felton High School Choir, 16 soloists, and 19 members of three ensemble groups that achieved a rating of one superior on the hardest level performance, Class One at regional competition, to advance to the Texas State Solo and Ensemble Competition to be held in Austin on June 1. Within, within this group of students from both high schools, there are eight vocalists who will be competing both as a soloist and as a part of one of the qualifying ensembles. The Felton High School Choir is directed by Tanya LaBourne and Travis Campbell. And while I read out their names, please do help hand up the certificate. Students who achieve a superior rating and will be competing as soloists are Sasha Bernal, Kendi Bramlett, Robert Brown, Kaylee Buck, Haley Cabasos, Kara Fish, Andrew Holcomb, Caitlin Kemp, Gracie Creek, Ethan Matthews, Sarah Millington, Jackson Reasoners, Kate Salters, Rachel Schiller, Rachel Shend, Megan Sloan. The three ensembles that achieve a superior rating and will be competing at state are the magical ensemble of Robert Brown, Kaylee Buck, Ian Farrell, Kara Fish, Andrew Holcomb, Caitlin Kemp, Ryan Peterson, and Kate Salters. A second magical ensemble of Annabella Vila, Corbin Berstet, Jose Cabrera, Madeline Harris, Gracie Creek, Ethan Matthews, Ben Carly Taylor. Tenor bass small ensemble that will also, also achieve a superior rating, Austin Sanford, Jehovah Jiv, Jerisow, Sidney Sherwood, and Mason Warren. Congratulations to this impressive group of vocalists. Congratulations. So our next group is our Felton I C Special Olympics Basketball Competitors and Volunteers. This spring, Felton I C Special Programs Department expanded the Special Olympics programs our students are competing in to include both basketball and coming soon, track and field. At the area Special Olympics Basketball Competition held in Waco last month, Felton I C was represented by 12 volunteers and eight student volunteers. Competing in individual skills competitions, we had Candace Frashear achieve an impressive sixth place finish. Congratulations, Candace. Also meddling, Josh Barney, Madeline Dollar, Kelsey Olson, and Tristan Villarreal, all earned... Athletes Evelyn Fox Hawkins and Tru earned individual gold medals. Congratulations to our gold medalists. And last, but certainly not least, the Felton 3v3 basketball team of Hunter Bussey, Devin McFloyd, Mario Ortega, Matthew Ortega, and Travis Towne, one gold. Congratulations. Amongst this group of impressive athletes, we also have our student volunteers that supported these athletes. Those student volunteers are Robert Brown, Stephen Cade Glaze, Abigail Hazelwood, Chase Johansson, Kendall Olson, Cade Elkins, Waylon Floyd, and Liam McCarthy. With the support of many of her special programs team members, Felton I C's Special Olympics participation is being led by adapted physical education coach Lauren Marks and several others. Congratulations. These group pictures are important, so parrots, feel free to move forward. We can pause.
This is really special. I love to say, maybe pictures as you need for...
Yeah, please.
One, two, three, the cheese.
We're so proud of these athletes and we look forward to seeing some track and field medals too.
All right, good evening. We're here to recognize Katie Schindler as the Temple Rotary Educator of the Month. Katie's a fourth grade math and science teacher at Sparta Elementary. And she's in her 12th year in education and her fourth year with us. Ms. Schindler has made a positive impact on her students because she teaches them a growth mindset. In this mindset, students set goals and make a plan to reach those goals with her help. Her lessons engage her students. Katie's positivity is contagious as she leads her students by demonstrating professionalism, optimism, and service. And Julie Manley, principal at Sparta, stated Ms. Schindler firmly believes in the power of relationship building and gets to know her students and their families well. She is an asset to Sparta in many ways and is very deserving of this recognition. So congratulations.
Congratulations. Now we're on to our big break community partner for this month. Over the last decade, Felton I C has maintained a steadfast commitment to addressing student safety and wellbeing in a comprehensive way that integrates several important elements. Alongside important partners, the district seeks continuous improvement for its emergency preparedness to ensure that students attend school in a safe, secure, and inclusive learning environment. Over the last year, the Bell County Office of Emergency Management, OEM for short, has played an important role in these efforts. As a member of the district's safety committee, staff from the Bell County OEM serves as an important resource in training and planning for our staff and students. At the same time, ensuring important coordination exists between the district and first response dispatch resources. In recognition of this important ongoing partnership, Bell County Office of Emergency Management is represented by Mike Harmon. Thank you so much for being with us this month, Mike. Congratulations.
She's going to have Chase, Mike. You've been an important partner to us since we've worked on our safety initiatives and appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have public comments. Ms. Burns, do you have anyone that's signed up?
I didn't see any. That being the case, we'll move on to our next item, which is the consent agenda. Does any board member have any item they'd like to have pulled for further discussion?
All good. Well, I entertain a motion for, to accept the agenda as, consent agenda as written. Is there a motion, Hooper? Dr. Montgomery, is there a second? Mr. Tyler, all approved, all hands. Thank you. We wrote our simple stimulus report. Got a good stuff in there.
All right, I have a few items this evening to go through with you. First, I want to talk a little bit about STAR testing. We are about to begin our required state assessments of academic readiness, the STAR. And we'll start those the week of April the 8th, which is coming up pretty quickly here. And that'll carry us through middle of May, believe it or not. So April the 9th, we have fourth and seventh grade writing, fifth grade math, eighth grade reading, and our English One E O C. On April the 10th, we have fifth grade reading and eighth grade math. Then we have English Two E O C on April the 11th. And then on May 6th through 10th, we have some more in, in the course exams for high school, Algebra One, Biology, and U S History. And then we'll come back in May, the middle of May, May 13th, with some more elementary math, grades three and four, grade six and seven. And then we'll do some retesting for grades five and eight for any student who needed a second attempt. Then on May the 14th, more reading, grades three, four, six, and seven, and then some additional reading, retesting for grades five and eight. And May 15th is our grades five and eight science test. And May 6th is the eighth grade social studies exam. At the same time, we'll be working through our special education testing, our STAR Alt Two. That runs the, pretty much the entire month of April, April 1st through the 23rd. So a huge shout out to Vicki Dean for helping us organize all of these materials as well as... Vicki, our campus administrators, and our teachers. Literally thousands of tests are administered, which requires a lot of organizing and securing and labeling and getting back in certain orders to state. And so it's a big endeavor. So we appreciate our staff for their work to prepare the kids and to administer the test. The choir trip to New York in April, our high school choir kids will get to create some special moments and make some memories as they travel to New York City to participate in the Choirs of America Nationals. We have about 85 students who are going on this trip with their chaperones and an administrator. They leave bright and early on April the 24th. They'll get back on the 28th. That's a pretty quick trip to New York City. Their festival includes workshops, a clinic, and some opportunity to observe other top choirs. And it also culminates with a performance on stage. They will perform in the Prism Concert at the world famous Stern Auditorium in Carnegie Hall. Which is a big deal, yeah. And they've been invited to sing a spotlight performance during the concert, performing two pieces by famous composer Zee Randall Stroup, including one that was written especially for... At Lakewood Elementary, Kelly Francis. At Purtle Elementary, Alyssa Lewis. At Tarver Elementary, Stephanie Wilson. At South Belton Middle School, Blair Hodges. From Athletics, Holly Lambert. From Special Education, Doug O'Laughlin. At Chisholm Trail Elementary, Candy Moon. At Leon Heights Elementary, Danielle Bridges. From Southwest Elementary, Veronica Shokany, Shokany, I think I said that correctly. Lake Belton Middle School, Edgar Miranda. Belton High School, Tiffany Barnes. From CTE, Mrs. Rebecca Alcozer. We know her. At High Point Elementary, Tina Frederick. At Miller Heights Elementary, Paige Karaskio. At Sparta Elementary, Katie Schindler, who you just saw as our Rotary Teacher of the Month. You still here, Kate? Is Katie still here? Moving home. And at North Belton Middle School, Dorothy Adams. At Belton New Tech High School at Wasco, Shannon Gish. And from our Fine Arts Department, Melissa Stuff. So congratulations to all of these Teachers of the Year. We will be honoring them on May 22nd at a luncheon, so we'll make sure that that's on your calendar. It will be held at the Harris Community Center again this year. And then we get the pleasure to interview each one of these at the Administration Building and make a selection for an Elementary Teacher of the Year and a Secondary Teacher of the Year who are then representing us at Region 12, and will compete for the Regional Teachers of the Year. So congratulations to these teachers.
Congratulations to all of our Teachers of the Year. This is amazing. It just speaks to your character and to who you are. One of them holds real dear in my heart is Dorothy Adams. My son had her for Special Education 6th through 8th grade, and he actually calls her his second mom. He'll call her and get advice from her before he talks to me. It's okay. We love her. So this is amazing. Congratulations on the teachers, for all the teachers of the year.
Great teachers. Okay, well, given that we've had some technology trouble in this room this evening, I am very excited to announce that next month, on April the 15th, we will be moving the location of our board meetings. We'll be meeting next door at the Pittinger Fine Arts Center. The furniture has arrived. It's in place, and we've spent some time figuring out how to set that room up, and we had our technology consultants in today working on the technology, and it looks and feels really great. So we're excited about April 15th. So this is our last night in this board meeting, or in this boardroom, excuse me.
We've had a peak, and I have to tell you, just really appreciative of all the hard work that you and your team has put into this because it's no easy feat, and those tables are heavy, the technology, and just really for you all to think of all the little details. It's been amazing going over there and dreaming with you, and just excited to be in that space.
Yeah, it'll be a really nice space, especially when we have a lot of recognitions, and we won't have people lined up in the hall. They will actually be able to come in and sit and see their person that they're here to honor. So we're excited. I want to thank Connie and Rachel. Rachel and Mike have been working on the technology. Connie's been following all of the details, and our purchasing department has played a big role in making sure we got the furniture the way we wanted it. So appreciate all of them as well. Last update I have is on the legislative session, and I want to highlight two of the major bills that we've been following, and those are Senate Bill 3 and House Bill 3. Senate Bill 3 is the bill that would provide a $5,000 across-the-board salary increase for our teachers. It has now been expanded to include librarians. It's an approximately $3.8 billion investment in teacher salaries. And that, that sounds like a great bill because our teachers deserve to have a salary increase. But it does put all the new money into salaries, and it doesn't address any other areas, and it doesn't give us more flexibility overall. So there are some limitations to that bill, although I do believe the Senate is to be commended to focusing on, for focusing on teachers who are most deserving. House Bill 3 is the bill that we're most focused on as a district, and it is being called a true school finance bill because it changes the current calculations in our summary of finance template for school finance formulas. It does add to parts of our funding formula, and it deletes some funding categories such as the high school allotment and gifted talented. So for that reason, because of the number of changes, additions, and deletions, it has taken some time to fully understand what it means to us and the impact that it has on our funding. We did see very recently the first run of Moak-Casey's funding models of the bill, and it does appear that House Bill 3, of course, we all know that it could change, right, over time as we continue in the session, but it has the potential to increase our funding by approximately $5 million, which by the way, I would note is the, almost the exact amount of funding that we were cut by in 2011. So that's kind of interesting to me. It does also drop school districts' property tax rates, and that is reported to be about four cents per $100 property valuation. Based on testimony received by a number of groups, House Committee members revised the bill to, recently, to delete a portion that called for extra pay for teachers whose students performed better than their peers, and that's commonly known as merit pay. So there was some testimony against that, and so they did remove that from the bill. The bill was unanimously approved by the House Committee on Public Education, and it has the backing of a majority of House members it appears to have. So it has gone forward. One of the things that we like best about House Bill 3, other than the flexibility that it provides, is that it provides $100 million more for the state to help fast-growing school districts like us. You heard our numbers. We will be continuing to build new school buildings and open them. And so it does allow for new, that increase in new instructional facilities allotment, which provides an additional $1,000 per student enrollment for the first two years of a school opening. And that's huge for us as we think about staffing a new high school. That, during the last legislative session, was increased from $250 to $1,000. However, it wasn't fully funded, so districts didn't get $1,000. You had new instructional facilities. So the timing of this, this additional money into this pot is really good for Belton ISD. So I'm excited about that and hope that that does come to fruition. Of course, we have a long way to go before the session is over. Things are going to continue to change as the bills are introduced and debated. We're keeping up with our weekly conference calls with Representative Shine and his staff, and of course, we get multiple listserv documents each day from our professional organizations. But I want to point out to you this evening that there's an impact to us in terms of just timing with our budget planning process, and so because of the conversation about salaries and the money that may or may not come to the district, it does have the, it does have an impact on us in our decisions on salaries and our timelines. So it's likely that we could delay. We've been making our salary decisions in June. It's likely that we could hold off until July this year because even if the bill passed, it would take some time for us to get that, for the state to get organized and get those, the formulas pushed out, and for us to know exactly how much money we're going to get. So we'll continue our process with what we know, which is current law, and then we'll be looking at what proposed legislation models will do. So that makes it a little trickier for our business office and for planning purposes, and it might delay us. If it does delay us a little bit, it doesn't have an impact on our teachers. Their paychecks, their contracts come in August, and their paychecks come at the end of August, so it should be all worked out by then. It's our other employees who have July 1 contracts that we would, we may not be able to process and get the, any raises in that July paycheck, but then we would make that up in August for them. We've done that in the past. It's been a long time since that's happened, and it's a little extra work for our staff, but we can do it, and certainly would be excited to have some additional money in the, in the revenue models. Any questions about that? Lots of bills. We could talk about lots and lots of bills, and at this point, it's a lot of conversation, a lot of debate, and we truly don't know what will happen in the end. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schindler. Next item on our agenda is consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the employment of community related employees.
I'm going to stand there for that. Sorry about that. That's me to start with, and then Todd. I want, it is my pleasure to get to recommend two principals to you this evening. So I'd like to start with Michelle. Would you come on up, Michelle? Michelle Tisch is going to be our principal at North Belton Middle School. We're so excited and proud of Michelle. We know Michelle. She's been with us for 16 years. She has 19 years of experience. She has bachelor's degree from Texas A&amp;M and a master's from Carleton State University. She's been a teacher for us, an assistant principal at Southwest and Purtle Elementarys, and she's been the principal at Leon Heights and Tarver Elementarys. Elementary has been at Tarver for the last five years, and has a track record of success in working with our teachers and our kids. She's excited. She gets results, and we just have a lot of confidence in her ability to lead at North Belton Middle School. So congratulations to Michelle. I didn't tell her. She knew what.
I'm very excited to get started, so thank you for, I mean, trust me.
She's going to be great. Thank you. The next recommendation I would like to make this evening is Jenestee Thomason. Come on up, Jenestee. And Jenestee is going to step up and be the principal of Belton New Tech High School at Wasco next year when Ben moves up to Belton High School. And we know her too. She's been with us for 11 years. She's been a teacher in Belton ISD, an assistant principal at Lake Belton Middle School, and most recently has been the assistant principal at Belton New Tech High School at Wasco. She has a master's degree from Texas A&amp;M, got her bachelor's from Sam Houston State University. She's done very well with us. She has the support and the confidence of the teachers at Belton New Tech High School, and certainly has our confidence as well. So congratulations to Jenestee. Our pleasure to make those recommendations. Give me to get ahead of you. All right, Todd.
We have two additional recommendations to those, and they're both for assistant principal positions. And when I call your names, you can just stand up. Cindy Allman. Cindy Allman is recommending for assistant principal at Charter Oaks Elementary, or Charter Oak Elementary. I always want to add that. Susan cracks me every time I do that.
I don't see why, I'm just looking at you.
She has a Bachelor of Science degree from Carleton State University, a Master's Degree in Education from Carleton State University as well. 15 years in education, eight of those here in Belton ISD as a diagnostician all of those years. And so we appreciate her and her willingness to step up and be hired for assistant principal. The next one is Michelle McKeskey. Michelle has been, is in her 14th year in education, three of those years at Belton ISD, has been an intervention specialist all three of those years at Miller Heights, and has her Master's Degree in Education from Concordia, a Bachelor's Degree from the University of Mary Harton-Baylor, and we're excited for her to.
Any further discussion online? Is there a motion to approve the district recommendation? Janice? Is there a second? Jess? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Now, I will say congratulations. This is official. Ms. Tisch, Ms. Jennifer, you've already spoken. Ms. Tisch, Jennifer, would you like to say anything?
Jenestee.
Jenestee. Jenestee.
It's okay, it's a little, no, I'm just really excited.
Okay. I'm excited too, because I can't get your name straight. And you see, I've gone from Ms. Tisch to Ms. Jenestee, you know. Feel free, please.
I'm really excited to get a good opportunity, can't wait to get to her with her.
We're excited to have you over there at New Tech. Thank you. And the other two ladies, would you all like to say anything? No, we're all good. Congratulations. That is quite all right. Okay, the next item on our agenda is review and discuss. Campus culture spotlight. Dr. Warren, we want to talk about Chisholm Elementary.
Good evening. Tonight, the spotlight is shining on Chisholm Trail Elementary. And as we always do, we'll take a look first at Chisholm Trail by the numbers. So you see, it's a large elementary with a diverse student population. Mrs. McMurtry and her staff recognized a need for explicit behavioral instruction after an analysis of observational data, student discussions, and discipline referrals. As a result, they set a goal to reduce the number of referrals as proof that students had healthier behavior. So they started weekly SEL lessons, social emotional learning lessons, for the entire campus because everyone, students and staff, are constantly learning and growing in this particular area. The lessons easily align with their pre-existing efforts through sacred civil schools and No Place for Hate, in addition to supporting newly initiated work through bridges, which is that set of targeted interventions that we're providing for students to be just a little bit extra when it comes to meeting our behavior expectations. By explicitly teaching these skills and providing opportunities to practice, students are better equipped to meet behavioral expectations. An important byproduct of these weekly lessons is recouping instructional time, which allows for more meaningful academic interventions and instruction. Students often refer to their SEL lessons when discussing behavior or expectations. And as I've mentioned before, there is nothing more powerful than having a seven, eight, nine-year-old be able to talk to you about the impact of their social emotional learning. Teachers and parents are also responding positively. The descriptive nature of these lessons minimizes the potential for confusion, providing students with clear steps to follow in a variety of situations. Consequently, it's easier for staff and parents to support students behaviorally. The long-term objective is for students to do better and to be better prepared to handle social challenges that may arise in a way that reflects respect for themselves and for others. So by thoughtfully incorporating these...
Mrs. McMurtry and her staff recognized a need for explicit behavioral instruction after an analysis of observational data, student discussions, and discipline referrals. As a result, they set a goal to reduce the number of referrals as proof that students had healthier behavior. So they started weekly SEL lessons, social emotional learning lessons, for the entire campus because everyone, students and staff, are constantly learning and growing in this particular area. The lessons easily align with their pre-existing efforts through sacred symbol schools and No Place For Hate, in addition to supporting newly initiated work through Bridges, which is that set of targeted interventions that we're providing for students to be just a little bit extra when it comes to meeting our behavior expectations. By explicitly teaching these skills and providing opportunities to practice, students are better equipped to meet behavioral expectations. An important byproduct of these weekly lessons is recouping instructional time, which allows for more meaningful academic interventions and instruction. Students often refer to their SEL lessons when discussing behavior or expectations. And as I've mentioned before, there is nothing more powerful than having a seven, eight, nine-year-old be able to talk to you about the impact of their social emotional learning. Teachers and parents are also responding positively. The descriptive nature of these lessons minimizes the potential for confusion, providing students with clear steps to follow in a variety of situations. Consequently, it's easier for staff and parents to support students behaviorally. The long-term objective is for students to do better and to be better prepared to handle social challenges that may arise in a way that reflects respect for themselves and for others. So by thoughtfully incorporating these weekly SEL lessons, Chisen Trail is empowering our students to more skillfully regulate their own behavior. In the end, the entire campus benefits from investing in this one simple intervention of weekly SEL lessons. Congratulations to Chisen Trail.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Dr. Leslie is going to talk to us about regarding adoption of English Language Arts and reading instructional materials.
Yes, I am. I'm very excited to present this to you tonight because in all of the adoptions that we will do over time for instructional materials in our areas, the English Language Arts is probably the largest. And so it's a very big project that we're at the final stages of in terms of recommendation. And so I'm gonna start with a quote to a little, frame this work a little bit. This is a quote that was pulled from the Texas Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development. That's the most well-known resource that we use in CNI. And the quote states that this upcoming ELAR adoption is especially critical because it requires administrators to make their selections based on the needs of their district with limited funding. And what I want you to know from this is that, one, this is, like I said, a critical adoption. We didn't receive additional funding to select this resource. And so it's really challenging everyone to analyze the needs of their district and to support it with finding the funding. A little bit of information on that funding, several years ago, when we would go through a textbook adoption, we would choose a textbook and then we went to the state, we just selected what we needed, and they would give us those resources based on our enrollment. And the state came back and they decided to change that process and they created IMA, which is your instructional materials allotment. And that funding is based on a biennium. And so last year, for the 17, 18, and 18, 19 school years, we received right at $2.1 million. And when we received that funding, that's to cover instructional materials and technology resources. And so what states, what districts had to do is to start to really prioritize what all they would purchase and then to plan ahead over time because every year, the state's gonna come out with a different adoption that you'll be looking at. And so those adoptions vary in size and scope and cost. And so this English adoption is an expensive one. It's pretty much the most expensive one. And so really just making sure that we've planned accordingly to meet the needs. And I think that's really what's captured in that quote. I also want to-
Can I add to that, Deanna?
Absolutely.
So we used to receive state technology allotment funds, and those went away and were rolled into this IMA. So we like IMA funds because we have a lot of flexibility with them, but our funding overall with the textbooks and the technology is lower than what we had previously. So you might hear a lot about IMA during some of our legislative sessions.
What does that stand for?
Thank you. That stands for the-
Instructional Materials Allotment.
So that's the amount of money that the state gives us to purchase instructional materials. And of course, we exceed that amount, as you'll see this evening. So just wanted to point out that we, you know, we add to this that it doesn't cover everything absolutely important to paperwork technology with the same help.
The other thing I do want to mention before we get into the process of selecting this resource is the recognition that our teachers continue to be the absolute most valuable resource in the classroom. And so tonight, we are selecting tools for them, but I still think it's important that we publicly recognize they are our most valuable resource, and we will continue with the professional development to support them, but we're selecting a tool, and it's a tool that they are recommending. So the state, every year, will send out what's called a proclamation, and in that proclamation, they will tell you what resources that they're looking at. They're typically, right now, the state's kind of done that about a year later than the revision of the TEES. So last year, the state revised the new ELAR TEES, and then they came out with this proclamation for us to adopt resources in English Language Arts Reading K through 8 and Spanish Language Arts and Reading K through 5. Now, I think it's important to note, not only for funding purposes, but for selection of instructional materials, that next year's proclamation is English Language Arts and Reading 9 through 12. So we'd already started to preliminary look at resources in a flow that would go K-12, even though those resources are not yet. And then in proclamation 2021, the following year will be pre-K enrollment systems. So we like to know ahead of time kind of what's coming, not only so we can plan with our IMA funding, but like I said, so that when we're selecting resources, we're keeping in mind what's coming in this future adoptions. So one of the things that we're most proud of, we have a very formal process for selecting our materials. Much like our curriculum writing, our teachers are at the center of and lead that process. So like I said, they're our most valuable resource, so they're the ones that are gonna lead the process for us selecting these materials. We selected a committee of teacher representatives. They represent all elementary campuses and they represent all grade levels and positions. So we had 30 teachers that formally represented the committee. Now, part of their responsibility on the committee is to go back and keep their campus and then their grade levels abreast of the discussions and where we're going. In terms of the sec-, oops, sorry, just one too many. In terms of the secondary committee, we had seven teachers also representing all three middle schools and all grade levels. And then we had seven district representatives, and they are very anxious. They're out there in that audience, and I just want to take a minute to recognize them. They are non-voting members, so they do not have a final say in the actual vote of these materials. However, they have led this process and done extensive work in our professional development, their coaching, and their planning. And so those team members that are present tonight are Lauren Brisbane, who serves as our director of English Language Arts and Reading, Vicky Dean, who is our director of accountability and testing, Tiffany Rusell, who is our coordinator of secondary English Language Arts and Reading, Barbara Epperson, who is our coordinator of social studies, Yolanda Seranana, who is our coordinator for bilingual ESL, and Lila Kapadchik, who is our coordinator of middle school special education. These folks are instrumental in getting this work accomplished, so I appreciate each of them.
Next, we have the formal process. And so we have, we held five sessions with the committee. Now, I do want to really emphasize that these five sessions were the committee meeting and the committee work, but like many other initiatives in the district, you know, we have a committee meeting, but there's a lot of other work going on. And so while we have these five meetings, that team that I just mentioned, they held many conversations through principal meetings, grade level team meetings, one-on-one coaching, meetings with the bilingual focus groups, constantly talking about our work, our philosophy for teaching English Language Arts and Reading, professional development we've done, and how these different resources would complement or extend that work. We had many teachers throughout the system that would try resources, and we'd get feedback back. Do you like it? Do you not like it? Were the pressure points? What would we need to consider if we adopted it? One of the unique things that occurred in this process to us is that right around December, the committee really became committed to looking at a specific resource, and that was the FMP classroom. So you can see on there that our last meeting, we were really able to focus on in-depth understanding of all of the components. So when you're adopting English Language Arts, it's not just one book anymore. It's a whole system of varying resources, and so we could take a deeper look at those resources. Which brings me to what we're recommending tonight. So as I mentioned to you, this state has realigned the TEES, and they are expecting students to be, to be able to listen, speak, read, write, and think across seven strands. And those seven strands are our foundational skills, comprehension skills, response skills, multiple genres, author's purpose and craft, composition, and inquiry and research. And what we have done is taken those seven strands, we've mirrored them to our instructional model. So we teach in a workshop model, and then we've named the resources that address each of those TEES within that strand. And so from an overall picture, what we are recommending, what our committee is recommending is the purchase of Fontaine's and Penel's system for K through 5, Teachers College Writing units of study for K through 8, and we have been using those for a year, but now we're formally adopting them as our resource, and then Teachers College Reading 6 through 8. This mirrors, and I want to give a special thanks to not only the professional development that we have done over the course of the last three years, but also really appreciate the, our Belton Education Foundation and the classroom libraries that they have provided for our teachers because this work aligns directly with all of those purchases. And so they have really helped us out with getting, and I really believe we'll see that come to fruition also with our high school adoption. If you saw, they've adopted some of the club initiatives, and so appreciate them and the support. In terms of the Spanish Language Arts, we'll be addressing Spanish through the purchase of titles within these systems that are in Spanish. And so our bilingual teachers, when we've been meeting with them, we're looking at our framework, specifically how we're addressing English Language Arts in bilingual classrooms, and then they'll be using the same system with additional support. And so with that recommendation, I just, I wanted to attach some pictures because these are a couple of our BISD moments that we've had over the year. You see high school students that are sharing, I mean, those are high school guys, their reading books from classroom libraries would be, that's pretty cool right there. North Belton Middle School's been promoting their reading with the bicycles. We've got elementary kids implementing our writing and our reading strategies. And I just really wanted to end this presentation with the recognition that this is a large adoption, but that we believe in our CNI department and in Belton that reading and writing skills are fundamental. They're fundamental to every other discipline, and so we've taken this seriously and worked with our teachers to value that instruction and make sure we provide a high-quality resource for our students.
So Dr. Wilson, I just wanted to first thank you. So you said that this is something that the state has asked us to do, but they're not funding, which is great.
So they do fund it through the instructional materials allotment. However, what they fund is completely up to the district as your choice in terms of what resource you purchase. They do provide state-adopted resources that they recommend, and we've looked at all of this. They provide, or you can choose like what we have tied to the TEES. But what you pick and how much of it you pick and how you choose is up to you. So we are recommending not only this adoption, but we will look at purchasing it for every teacher. So a district could choose to have every teacher share, you know, what level of support you want to provide is based on the individual district.
We get one pot of money to pay for everything.
Pay for things.
So it doesn't cover everything, but we're still committed to providing these resources to our teachers. And so we will use other funds to supplement, you know, for the instructional things that we need for our classrooms.
And you have a spot, 2.1?
2.1 for the biennium. And so that, that is for technology as well and anything else we do. And so it certainly doesn't cover everything, but it helps.
Well, kudos to you and your team and the district as a whole to continually find ways to ensure that our kids are taken care of, even with limited resources. Really appreciate that. Any further discussion?
Quick question.
Yes, absolutely.
So you said y'all did this three years ago? Is that about right?
Did.
Did this process?
We, this is the first instructional materials adoption that I've done while in this position. Full blown like this, we've, we've adopted books along the way.
Right. So I mean, y'all are doing this, I mean, it's obviously a huge process. My question is, how often do you think you'll have to revisit this? Is this something that's-
That's an excellent question. So I'm very glad you asked that because I didn't say. Typically, a proclamation cycle is eight years. We have seen the state push it out to 10. And so we have planned for this adoption to last us, I mean, eight years, and we would hope to not need to revisit the ELAR for eight years now. But then, like I said, next year will be high school. Following that is pre-K. I believe pre-K is attached to science, science is coming up, social studies would be, I mean, there's just a cycle every year. But then, but like, I do want to go back and emphasize the challenge is when looking at that money, and we have done it, we're planning and predicting what those future adoptions could cost so that we're fiscally responsible.
Thank you.
So we want to, we want to pick the materials that best support our philosophy of instruction. And so this adoption supports what we believe in with instruction for English Language Arts and Reading, and these are quality materials. And these are, I would say, more advanced in terms of implementation in the classroom than you might find with some traditional basic readers. And so our teachers are to be commended for working at a high level in selecting the system that is known for quality. Fontaine's and Penel's is a quality program.
I was just gonna say, you know, we've been using that within the district for a long time, and typically within education in the past, it's, oh, the system comes in and it's out. You can't even get, you can't even get the thing learned before it's gone. But so, you know, kudos to Fontaine's and Penel because they have, they are the real deal, and they just keep getting better and better for students and teachers all the time.
And kudos to our teachers, and I really want to focus on them because they believe in the philosophy of re-instruction that we have challenged them with along the years. And this is a unified committee. And they were unified early on and allowed us to really look at each component and what we, what they would need. And we are, I mean, I don't want to dumb, but what we're, what we're purchasing and the quantity is based on their recommendations. So if they told us, we need a one-to-one resource for this, that's what we included in the purchase. If they said two or three teachers could share this particular resource, that's what we're purchasing. And so it was really quality, quality work among our staff.
Could you just clarify? I know the reading is going to align with our Spanish speaking classrooms.
Yes.
Does the writing align as well?
Yes, it does. And we are working with Dr. Laura, bilingual expert, to help us. I expect some more work to come in with our bilingual on their framework and how to better support them. But yes, the resources that they'll use in both English and, both in reading and writing, we'll, we'll make sure we have those resources that they need.
But it supports writer's workshop, which is the model that we use.
Yes.
And so it's all connected?
Yes, it is.
It's all aligned?
No worries. Okay. Any further discussion? We will at this time. The recommendation for us is to approve the adoption and purchase of ELAR instructional materials as presented. Is there a motion, Todd? Okay, Dr. Montgomery, thank you. Is there a second? Todd Taggart, okay, awesome. Okay, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously.
And the CNI department cheer.
Thank you for, thank you for supporting us.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on our agenda is issues concerns for future agenda or future report. Does the board have anything they'd like to report for instance? Seeing that, we'll move on to future events. We've got the B tennis tournament, March 30th at Long Island. We've got the golf tournament, April 1st at Long Island. April 3rd, we've got the PTA, PTO annual luncheon. And on April 15th, that would be our next report. That being said, we-
At the Pittsinger- At the Pittenger Fireworks Center.
At the Pittenger Fireworks Center, absolutely. If there's nothing further, we are adjourned.